Just left those other bag in the car.
Everybody ready?
You're ready, Don?
I'll be there.
We have a very lengthy correspondence here from Judy Larson, which I don't believe we have time to read before the appointment. It's basically a hate letter to me from Judy Larson, which I'll be glad to read at some point, but I don't think right now we have the time. And there's a bunch of rhetoric from these random ChicagoTribune.com, YourBusiness.com, NonprofitExpert.com. She just sent a bunch of articles from random websites. But it is public records, so I guess if anyone wants this, they can have it. Is it slow?
Yeah.
I thought it was a few minutes slow when I came in. Is this, yeah, Lincoln Park Manor?
Alliance does security stuff. So that's a power supply for one of those. Door alarms or something.
So Lincoln Park Manor Alliance Monitoring Technology is $91.67. And Lincoln Building Supply Construction adhesive, I guess, would be $80.239.
Yep, pay my bills. Not sure what that is. Invitation to join the federal class action law.
I think, I have some layups of that, but I think it is the Wilson Lake. We received a federal pilot agreement on them for what should be taxed. So, and I know that that would decrease the laws.
This lawsuit seeks to recover money that the court has determined the federal government owes each class member for the underpayment of its pilot act entitlement from 15, 16, and 17. Should we refer this to?
I think we need to refer it to the county attorney, so she can help us make a decision myself.
We also received correspondence from her, because I had asked her what response she suggested for the board to give to the refusal payment of rent for Lincoln Park Manor. We had sent an official letter requesting our rent to be caught up. It's in arrears for approximately four months. And the attorney did not respond to me. She sent a letter to the board and asked if we wanted her to come to a meeting to discuss it. So I would suggest that we do that. I move to request the attendance of County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare to the next commission meeting, if possible, to discuss Lincoln Park Manor's non-payment of rent.
I'll second.
Are you referring to the 30th or to the 2nd?
Well, the 30th is a Saturday.
Or the 29th, I'm sorry.
I, I guess whatever she's available for.
I would prefer it be the 2nd.
On a Monday?
Given the weather forecast, we need to bring in a crop, I probably be extremely short on Friday.
2nd would be 29. Any other discussion? Not all of the papers out.
Aye.
Let's look at the minutes real quick before we put in there the rest of the paperwork.
I'm meant to approve minutes from 2000, excuse me, June 18th, 2018.
Second. Any further discussion? Not all of the papers out.
Aye.
Taylor, you're up, I guess. I'm sure you have wonderful news for us today.
I think it's too bad it's not.
Good.
Looks good. Copies for you.
Thank you.
Are you ready for me to remember?
Yes.
Okay. I asked to put on the agenda this morning to discuss my budget proposal for 2019 for the district court. I guess the budget that I'm requesting this year is $67,350. That's actually just slightly less than our current approved budget for 2018, which is $67,382. Although the total budget has remained about the same, I have modified some of the line items based on anticipated expenses for the upcoming year. I don't know how in detail you want me to get at this point, so if you have any questions, I'd happy to answer them now. Or if you need more time to look it over, I can make another appointment with you to come back and discuss it.
What does GAL stand for?
Guardian of item.
The repair and maintenance, when we did, did we replace the air conditioner upstairs? Wasn't that an issue that we handled last year?
Yes.
So does that come out of our general fund or was that part of your budget?
I think it is considered a, a building.
So for your maintenance and repairs, as I see it jumped around from 17 was $1,383, down to 400, up to $750. What kinds of, was that just your office equipment?
That would be repairs, repairs to office equipment, like copiers or, which should technically all be still covered under a contract, I believe, depending on the repair.
What is district expense?
Our district has a budget and we pay a certain percentage of that. And that number for 2019 should be our percentage of the total budget.
Has the e-filing become more expensive or you're just planning, I mean, it's doubled from last year?
It's sort of doubled. I actually combined two line items. There was computer services and then there was an e-filing IT.
Okay.
I'm coding them all as computer services at this point. That would also include the purchase of two new computers and the labor associated with that. We have two computers in judge chambers and the courtroom that are from 2012 when they were purchased. And they're starting to show signs of slowing down. So I feel like since we're going to a more computer-based courtroom, we don't have case files anymore. It's all electronic. We probably keep those as up-to-date as possible.
What happens to the old ones? Does someone wipe them or?
We usually keep the hard drives out of them. And then, depending on how old they are, we put them back in the storage room.
So then, do you, do you have to pay for a separate telephone line than what we pay for the courthouse? Is that not?
We have, we split out.
Oh, by department?
Every office has.
Okay.
I don't suppose it's going to slow down up there.
I wish I could predict that, but I can't.
It's quite important to point out maybe that that's in our column that estimated she's reduced from what was actually approved to base upon, assuming how her year is going so far. So there could be a potential for carryover, but it's something that happens. She could be buying the general expenses instead of house.
How does that carryover work? Does it go into their own capital lay? It goes in the general capital lay?
We just had a carryover from 2017.
You did?
Yes, we had, I think, I want to say 10,000 left over in 2017. Around there.
You said it was six, what was the approved for the?
$67,382.
$67,382. But that was in addition to the carrier? That doesn't include the carrier because it was in the general?
The, the general just comes secondary.
Right, okay.
There hasn't been, there's been the opposite too.
And your wages didn't come out of this budget?
No. We are state employees of our office.
So then, does that district expense cover any of that in your district budget?
District expense, what I can kind of see is like supplies for CSOs, court services officers, and travel expenses and things for the district judge is where the travel expenses go.
Well, thank you for being so thorough. It's nice to see a budget that reflects some contemplation in each line item.
Thank you, Deb. If we have any more questions, we'll ask you to come by.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Get rained out, Howard?
Twenty-five hundreds.
Twenty-five?
Nice rain.
Out about a half inch.
Um, we have five minutes. Do we, do you want to discuss this, this something?
I.
I mean.
Kind of turn it over to Jennifer and I've heard really see something that's going to benefit her.
I mean, have you heard any, I've not even heard of this.
I've never heard of it either. No idea what it is.
Well, it's coming out of Washington DC.
The only federal property, I guess, that we have in the county is the lakes.
But is that even?
The portion of the lake that would have been, the land would have been having taxes paid on on a similar. Whatever became federal property when they built the lake.
Ours is very small.
I was going to say.
It's still money that you receive. And I can't tell you because the end only gets that in. You can't tell you exactly.
What the amount is?
I would say it's a class action. The attorneys are going to get most of it. You might get a little bit of the tail end, but that would be my guess. I don't think we're getting notified by the federal case.
You will not have to pay for any fees or expenses directly. Fees and expenses the court determines should be paid to a class counsel. If any, might be deducted from the money obtained from the class and might reduce the amount available for distribution.
Kathy, did you have something you want to talk to us about this morning?
I was just wondering. Big question. I just hate to see if you were going to talk about our presentation.
I didn't know if you had something to add to that or, or what.
Well, we lost about, USD 290, we lost 101,000 due to the overall budget at KSD for special education. So, and losing that 101,000, we, we're decreasing $3,650 in our local option budget because that's 30% of our general fund. I don't, I call Mr. Stuck, like, he wasn't for sure he had. We have, we just received our legal max letters. So it happened to every school in the state because they hire more special education providers. They usually hire an average of, a year they hire 290. So. We are at the mercy of.
Deborah, your ear, I didn't know, I didn't know, I want to hear your ear, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess Kathy, I, I would just say that I'm having a little trouble with the bricks and mortar part of the presentation. I think that the taxpayers need to step to the table. I don't know why I, the three commissioners here need to be raising taxes on the rest of the people when we have a board dedicated to that. That bothers me a little. That, as making the comfort for the schools, hating and air, I can, I can do that. I still am, am struggling with the fact that, that when it comes down to what this county will need as a whole, we will go out and ask for money from the taxpayers. And that money that we've spent to you is gone. And we already hear that taxes in this county are way too high. I'm not sure how, how we can lower taxes if we continue to spend money. And it's needed. I think we need a different philosophy, I guess, among the people here realizing that we need to step to the plate and provide the necessities for education and for running this county. But it all costs money. And again, I guess the biggest problem I have is the bricks and mortar. I, I think the school districts have an avenue to do that with bond issues. I also have trouble putting bricks and mortar in Russell County. Really have trouble with that. So that's kind of where I'm at. Do I think, do I think we can help you? Yes, I do. I, I would help you, but there are a few areas where I have a few problems. I'm still working on that, I guess, in my mind, how I can justify them.
I, you know, I'm sure we could do, as far as I'm concerned, we could do something. I'm not sure. A week isn't enough time to digest it all for me, I guess.
Could you touch on, and I'm sorry if you forgive me if you thought you thoroughly explained it, but could you touch on what portion of the project you said you were looking into grant availability? Was that for only the storm shelter?
Yes, there's no grants available for.
Any of the, right.
I mean, not any that I know of.
But did you, but we're, I'm, sorry, I just need clarification. You're saying you are considering the option of doing FEMA?
We've applied.
You've already applied?
Oh, yes, yes, we applied. I think it's specifically states and then we applied way back in March, I believe.
Both districts. Both districts.
Yes, yes. And I actually heard from the FEMA people last week and they needed more information. But I know it was in our presentation, but just a quick reminder, if we do FEMA, it's only a school only.
You can't use it as the, okay, that's what I was wondering.
They, that's their question is that.
So if it's 100% funded internally, you can use it however you want. But if you were to apply and use FEMA money, then it's for school use only or storm shelter, community? Not, not even community?
No, it's just, FEMA, if they're doing it for schools, it's for school only. They, the gentleman that we've been working with in Topeka Emergency Management says specifically, if they build a FEMA structure for schools, it's school only.
But that's the immediate need anyhow.
Correct. We don't have any storm shelter out in our state.
Can you, can the school utilize it for other things other than just the storm shelter?
We will be using, probably, yes, we would use it as, currently we're thinking about a rest micro. Yes, so we would, you know, we have the community access and the locker room will be open all year because it closes down during, as long as we have to, they have somewhere.
Are they saying that in a storm, you wouldn't allow that the manager could come in?
Right, that's right.
That's what I, Jacob Gray is his name, and that's what he's telling me because I had to write another statement and send in to them that the storm shelter would be only used for USD two ninety-eight staff, students, and if there's any built visitors. So if we had a basketball game, we would be able to use it during the basketball game. Anybody that's in the building at the time.
And it says only if in session.
So session would be basketball game?
Right, you're, you're there, you're already present and something happens.
Correct.
You don't open it when it's non-use, in, not in use and.
That's why we gave the option one and two.
I see that.
Is that we could use option two would be a community storm shelter. In a bed center.
So, I guess, I, I just want to go back and touch on what you were saying, Aljo. If you're saying that you're concerned about the taxes, but yet you would assume that anything that needs to be done would be through a bond, that is raising taxes. I mean, and that's.
That's not me raising taxes. That's the community raising taxes. The burden now is being placed upon us three to make that determination whether we are going to use this money, which to be replaced would have to be come through taxation. And I guess what I'm saying is that the voters a year ago were adamant that they turned down a bond issue to raise, to raise taxes. So now, now I'm put in a position where I'm going to spend money that in order to replace it, I would have to raise taxes. I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm just saying that puts me in a, uh, as you would say, probably, it gives me more power than I really want.
That was a substantially higher bond than what.
Yeah, it was.
I'm not too sure what.
Right, but I also.
Not too sure what a million, like whatever it was.
I also would like to know why that money has to be replaced. You keep saying that if you spent the money, that it would have to be replaced. I'm not sure why you're saying.
It doesn't have to be replaced, but when we get down to work bricks and mortar for this county, that money isn't going to be available.
But we haven't used any of that money for county-wide bricks and mortar. I mean, you've, you've allocated it to special interests.
Well, yes, we have. We're working with a nursing home now that's being funded by that.
Right, and that's a special interest group that serves a small, small percentage of the county.
I would disagree with that statement totally.
I would say in comparison to the schools and the amount of people who are employed by the schools and the children who receive their education in the schools within the doors and in the building, you're talking about a vast difference in the number of people.
But they have, I think the point he's trying to make is that they have taxing with the.
But I think it's our job to be contemplating the entirety of the tax situation, not just whether or not we were the ones that imposed the tax. I mean, that's, that philosophy totally negates our duty as representatives of the citizens. We're representing them in more than one way. It's not just, that's like saying if you only cared about the nursing home, that that was your only priority of an institution.
I also think that he was willing to help. He just wasn't clear in his mind yet for that help, what he wants to do for them.
I guess just looking at it from numbers, why, why would we want to impose a bond on our citizens at what, four to five percent? What, what are we looking at? Four to five percent interest? When we're making less than a half a percent interest on that type of money that we already have in the bank? I mean, just strictly dealing with numbers, to me, you know, I'm, I'm not picking through the nuts and bolts of every last request here, but on the grand scale, if you're talking about a million dollars, taxing for a million dollars at five percent, or spending the million that you have at the bank that you're not even making a half a percent, it's kind of just a logic situation if you're looking out for the benefit of the general public and their overall taxation.
It's not so much the interest, it's like the bonds will have to be repaid. Bonds aren't free. They will have to, they will have to.
And what I'm saying is, it, in ten years, it hasn't been spent on anything except for one particular special interest group, and that's my opinion. But, you know, it wasn't put up, that, that project for half a million dollars wasn't put up to public vote as I requested, so.
Neither will this bond issue or be this school financed if, if we do it.
Maybe we should be looking at a public, a public referendum.
It's a huge goal for you guys to decide to start spending some of that money and that's, yeah, I get that, that makes sense. But I think ultimately, don't we need to have a plan of how the money is to be utilized?
Yes.
I'm just looking here at the end of twenty seventeen and six million two hundred and some thousand dollars. Now, mind you, minus some of that because of the nursing home.
Call it half a million.
But what is the intentions of the six million dollars? Personally, I think the community storm shelter is a fantastic idea. I'm a little disappointed that USD two ninety-nine was suggested it go to Russell County. Again, if that's where their needs are at, then it would be nice if we put two storm shelters up, one for each community. Because there are people that don't have the means. I can tell you, US Towers has asked and they come in when they're in session because they have no place for their employees there. And so if there is a tornado warning, there can be here to the basement. But I think maybe you guys need to start planning on how you're going to utilize them on this time.
Most factors anymore around storm shelters. I know Brett claims those.
But she's talking about one that's current now. I, I mean, I, I've gotten a lot of feedback that that money should be used to fund our infrastructure, meaning roads and bridges and things that we are severely behind on. Um, and I, I agree with that. However, I don't see a reason that we can't pick a few fundamental targets so that we can kind of support overall infrastructure, I'll call it. Because you were saying bricks and mortar, Aljo, but that, what better investment is there than bricks and mortar that you can see and is tangible for the next fifty years, rather than something that either, either goes, it's, it becomes obsolete with technology or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of validity in investing in something that lasts. I mean, a lot of the controversy that I've heard about the school bond issue was Sylvan built their school fifty years ago or more and hasn't had a bond since. And everyone has, you know, kind of said that the construction and, and the lack of, I don't, I don't know, I don't want to use the wrong word here, but basically that the new building that was built on eighteen for the, for the high school for USD two ninety-nine, or two ninety-eight, excuse me, was not well done. So that's why there's so much.
Well, you can't compare buildings from fifty years ago to modern construction. If you built that school in Sylvan, it would cost thirty, forty million.
No, the point, no.
To build it the way it's built now.
But we're talking about, you have a school that has lasted without needing some kind of significant bond repair monetary investment for fifty years versus one that barely lasts twenty-five. It barely outlived the length of its original bond to build it. I think they had just paid it off, what, a year ago, or the year before?
I, I know, I get what you're saying, and, and you're right. Because somebody said at one of our meetings is, is how come we didn't plan better for maintenance? Like the fact that every air conditioner was going to be torn every year at the same time.
At the same time.
At the same time. And somebody pointed it out at one of the public meetings, how come we didn't plan better for that? You're right. We should have planned better for that.
I just want to, I don't, we're getting at you.
Yeah.
That, what are, what we're asking you is for the old building. It is for the Greg's school, the HBAC for the Greg's school. That is, that, I mean, that school needs some, just like what Mr. Stuckline is asking for, I don't know what's going to come in, but for his elementary. They're about the same age. We're both asking for HBAC because we are on a prayer. We are, we're just getting along. I mean, we had some really good luck this year with some experimental things that helped us eat a little more life out of our boilers, but as we presented.
You're saying if something dramatic or drastic were to happen, you don't have the funds within your working capital for the present year to address an issue of that size?
The only thing we're asking out of the high school is to replace some units that should have never been put there in the first place because they create carbon dioxide. I mean, they, they are a hazard. They're a hazard on so many different levels and a storm shelter. But what we're asking for is mainly for the old building. It's not for, it's not for the high school. It's for, you know, a nineteen fifty-two building. And you're investing in the future. You're investing in now and you're investing in the future.
And it still has the original floor.
Correct, correct. I mean, it's a, it's a beautiful building.
But you live by floor now, it's going to last for sixty years.
Correct.
It's just a whole different construction, height, back then, what it is. Deborah, do you have to say something?
Yes. My topic's just as depressing. The health insurance.
It went down this year, I'm sure.
No. No. The state sent the rates for, um, next year for the health insurance. Um, I tried to make it hopefully a little easier and a little more understandable this year. Um, the front page is what these, this, the first two pages are what I got from the state. And it's always really confusing trying to explain how the insurance works. They set the employee's rates based on a January through December schedule, and then they set the employer rates from July to June. So like our rates are already set for the, for the, the rest of this year and then the first half. So when you're looking at the employer, the employer rates change every July. Does that make some sense? So you kind of have to take the numbers and kind of put them all together to come up with the totals. And on the third page, I kind of did that for you. I put them together, um, based on what the state says the employees' rates would be next year, what our rates would be, and what the total rates would be for January through December. And I stuck with the ten percent that you did, that we're doing this year, where the dependent plans pay the ten percent. And broke out what each of the five plans and the four tiers would be. Because they're offering five plans now, which makes it a little bit more complicated to kind of go through. With your method of the ten percent, you know, it passes the increase on both to the county and to employee. So next year, if we stick with the ten percent, everybody would be paying a little more. On both sides.
They didn't just increase by a percentage?
No. No, because they increased the employees and then they increased the employers. So the employee goes up so much and the employer goes up so much, but then they decreased the dental, it looks like, um, as well. But then they increased the health, so it didn't really offer much of a savings. I asked them for the percentage and they didn't really, they haven't given me the percentage. But what I did do was take the total cost of the family plan for eighteen and the total cost of the plan will be for nineteen for the family plan. And I got like nine point six nine percent, around ten percent. Yes. When you, when you add all of the increase together.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard because, like, if you see on this second page, and I'm always horrified to even show this to anybody, but like they say that an employee who is on the family plan with contribution or at, and it's Plan A, the state will charge them for nine hundred and forty-six dollars next year. We just cannot go from two hundred to nine hundred dollars to our employee. The county has always picked up more of the premium. So you have to add the employee rates and you have to add the employer, and then I come up with a total premium.
But I thought we were mandated under this program to pay the ninety percent of, of the employee's plan.
It's hard.
If they're in a single.
The, the single plan is different, yes.
Okay, but you're talking.
And the single plan, the last few years, and it's fair, I feel it's fair, that the single plan just pays the single rate set by the state. And like, I don't care. Um, I am on Plan C, so like next year, as a single person on Plan C, my premium would be seventy dollars and seventy-two cents for health and twelve dollars and eighteen cents for dental. And if I get my lowest points, I, it would go down forty dollars.
Are we mandated as the employer to pay a share if they add on the dental or vision? Or is that, can that be separate completely where the employee pays a hundred percent of it?
Last year, we did that, and down here, I did break out for the employee what the health and the dental were. We only had two people decline the dental, so it didn't really save us.
But I mean, we're not, we're, we are mandated to pay, it was, it worked out to be about ninety percent of the individual, of our employees' individual plan.
Roughly, yes.
We chose to go ahead and pay ninety percent if they were on a family plan, et cetera, et cetera. But are we mandated to play, to pay any portion of their additional?
On the dental, it is. On the front page, um, where it shows A, C, J, and Q.
Yeah, with dental.
Then that's the dental. So like for the county, um, I would take, looking at the employee family one, I would take the eleven eighty-five, the seventy-nine oh-three, add those together, and that is what we're required to pay for the family plan. And to get the total dollars for the premium as a whole, then if you flip the page, then you also add the employee share to it as well. And you can get what your total premium is. Yes. That's what's hard is because you have to add both together, the first page and the second page.
Well, because this is showing their portion.
Yes, and where we pick up all but ten percent of that, you have to add it all together.
But, but we're mandated to pick up dental and vision?
Not vision.
Just dental?
Just dental.
What did we pay for vision this year?
We don't pay, the employee has to pay all.
We didn't pay any, okay.
They, I shouldn't say that. On the, on the health part, they get a free eye exam. The vision that the employees pay for helps cover glasses and contacts, and they have to pay a hundred percent for that. We thought last year if we broke out the health and the dental, that maybe some employees wouldn't want the dental. They all want the dental. So it didn't save us any money, which is okay. It gives them the choice. And then they chose whether they wanted to pay for that portion of their premium as well, and most of them did. So basically, you would take, like, if you wanted to figure out the total of your family plan, you would take that eleven eighty-five, you would take that seventy-nine oh-three, and then you would add the nine forty-six twenty-four, and then you'd add the forty-three seventy-nine. And that would tell you what the total family premium would be from seven-one of eighteen to six-thirty of nineteen, and then you have to add this, this bottom column, this bottom, this bottom breakout for the second half of the year. Yes. This nineteen will be our last year with the state's contract, and we'll have to decide whether we want to start to look elsewhere or whether we want to stay where we are.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at these numbers, that, and I, I mean, I know some of you are self-employed, so you pick up your own insurance, but I mean, the single person, and this would be the most expensive plan, it's about six hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, and then you double that for the person and their spouse. The only, I mean, I can see where there's cost savings because you have employee and family at the same rate as employee and spouse, but it's going from eleven eighty-five a month to twelve twenty-four a month.
Yes.
Effective.
In the middle, effective.
In a week.
Well, no, that's.
Oh, nineteen, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It just changed for this year to this eleven eighty-five.
From, yeah, from last year's.
Five, and now it's forty to go. Yep, yep, you're with me.
I assume this last page is.
And the last page is, I usually give you that, um, every year.
Projection of where is that last year's?
That's where we are right now.
That's where we are right now?
Um, the numbers, the, the current enrollment, that's our current enrollment, but the dollars is based on the new rates. I just did it really quickly.
Did you take in last half of nineteen into this number?
The enrollment numbers are based on eighteen, and then, yes, these are all based on nineteen's figures, the first and the second half, yes.
And what, what did we have last year?
I did look that up.
These plans by department, or is this projected?
That's, that's what we have. Um, every year I always show you where the breakdown is and where all the plans are going.
Why do we have, I thought that was a big issue last year when we decided on the county attorney budget.
Well, when we were doing the budget, I went ahead and added that in, in case you guys decided that you were.
You're saying we, we did budget in our two thousand eighteen health insurance.
When I was putting the numbers together for eighteen, I threw in another plan in case you chose to add a staff member for the. in case you chose to add a staff member for the county attorney. And I still kind of have it hanging out there in case you guys decide that you're going to do that. But we usually, I don't think that you guys budget the number that I give you as worst case. I think that you kinda go a little lower and hope that we make out okay. Because like currently, we have five employees that aren't enrolled in the health plan. And we have four positions that are open, so we're- We should be, we should end up better, better off because people chose to not take the insurance where we're short-staffed.
Right.
And so sometimes that kind of is a blessing.
Yeah, yeah.
But if some of the people that aren't enrolled ever left, the next employee might take the plan.
Right. Gotcha.
And it's hard, I try to, I've tried in the past, I try to estimate who I thought was single that might get married or who that might have children and who might switch plans or who might. But it's such a nightmare trying to figure out who might, who might change. And there's a couple people that I could see maybe their plan changing or if they left, you know, we won't hire a single person, you know, cause you just never know.
Right.
But it gives us-
Actually, when's the last time we got any information from any other competitors?
We haven't in years because we just-
Can you work on that, just so we can-
No.
Why? You too busy?
No. That was the other thing, is if we do decide that we want to look beyond the state, most of the counties that have, they sought help. Because it is apparently, in order to go out and to seek bids and seek amounts from other companies, they're gonna wanna let a demographic information on our employees and different things. And they said it's a lot of work trying to get the companies everything that they need. And some of the counties have said that they've asked for help, like at a broker maybe, or they started well in advance because they're gonna ask for a lot of, it could be something that could be easy. It's gonna take time because they're gonna wanna know how, more than just sixteen single people.
Like the hospital used a broker out of Newton.
They use who?
All of their insurance.
Who?
The hospital used a broker out of Newton.
There was a guy who came by one time and said that's what he did, and I, he may or may not have left a card. I know that some of the other counties have said that when they went to look elsewhere, that they used a broker because they knew what they were doing, they knew what they wanted, they were, it was much more helpful. So it, I couldn't just call up Blue Cross Blue Shield and say, what's the, what's the rate gonna be for our group? Because they look at claims and a lot of other, a lot of other things. But if it's something that we want to do and we really think that we want to look into possibly leaving the state after next year, it's something that we wanna start.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if you look at the trends in the economy and you watch what's been going on lately, I mean, there may be some more competitive private market pricing out there in the near future, just watching what's been going on. So I think, you know, it would be my political philosophy to endorse that in any way that we can.
I think it was the Ellis County person that told me the one time that she started about a year, a year out, starting working with brokers.
So can we, can you start that now?
And we, if that's something that we're thinking that we wanna do, then yeah, we would wanna start looking for, for somebody to help us with that. So that we could get the best rate that we could get. And nineteen is the end of the contract with the state. I know that there have been counties that-
But this time next year, we'll need to be making those decisions.
Yes, you will.
So I, I think that's where we should be headed, at least to, we, we need to see what our options are. It was a what, three-year contract?
Three years, yes.
I know, I thought the three-year contract had a percentage increase cap. Didn't I read that? Wasn't that part of the contract was?
The, the part I remember is the, that you have to pay to get out.
They project the cost, but I don't think they guaranteed it.
I, I'd have to look at it again. I remember the part in the contract where it said that if you wanted to get out, that it was based on a percentage and, and about how much. I remember that we, we looked at that last year when we talked about it.
I just thought the whole incentive was there was only gonna be a capped percentage increase annually.
Even ten percent is huge.
Well, yeah, but I wasn't thinking it was ten percent.
But twenty's even larger.
Yeah, it is even larger, yes, it is.
Well, we're seeing thirties.
If, if it's something that you seriously as a board feel like you wanna look-
Yeah, like are those increases due to our claims? Or are we talking about, I mean, how much of these increases are due to our claims? What percentage versus just the yearly?
Everyone's claims in the group is, and that's sometimes is good and it's sometimes it's bad. Cause it's not just our claims, cause we're part of the state group. So it's everybody in the state group's claims that they look at. And then they look at the overall trends in costs. They have a whole healthcare commission that works on. But if it's something that you guys are serious, then yeah, we would wanna start taking some time to look for somebody that would assist us.
You could start with contacting brokers and seeing what their fees are and at least finding out maybe who you'd like to work with.
What we would probably do is, like, the HR people and the clerks, they have like a listserv and we can see who other counties have used. And they can kinda help with pros and cons on who they used and come up with some ideas. Cause I don't know who, who, who we would use. I remember the lady from Ellis who told me that she, and I know that Dawn said she talked to somebody at her clerk's meeting that had gone out and sought new bids, so. But these are, you know, like I said, it's just rough numbers, but it's something for you to be thinking about when you're doing the budget.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, could you give us, well, I'm sure I have it.
That's right.
If you could pull it up quickly, could you, this is the estimated under these new prices.
You wanna know what we budgeted for in eighteen?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey Greg, yep.
We got done some more. We're good. Quick overview of how things are going at the facility. Generator phase is looking pretty good, but I got it wound up. Kinda waiting off on inspections and all that stuff before we get things switched over. Still kinda got some delays on the flooring. Still dragging that out, waiting for them to complete that. Another thing while I've got you on flooring, a while back, I had contacted you guys about replacing one of the units for boiler system. The other day, I was notified that we've got loose tiles, new flooring due to condensation, two more of these units leaking, pans are rotted out in them, condensate pans. I've contacted Streets since they were the last ones to purchase the other one for us. I don't have an estimate for it yet, I'm hoping to today. The last one, I believe, was around twenty-six hundred. Like I said, I've got two of them, I talked with Jeremiah there. He says, well, copper prices have gone up, so we've got new books, so I don't know. But I would hope to stay in that same level price, but that's something we're gonna have to carry over because it's already hard on our floors already. Some other things I wanted to talk to you guys about. We had the, what was Kansas Basement Foundation put in the eight piers along the north side of the facility. You recall, I have to jack that up. We are having some settling on there again. So I had, or now called Thrasher, have them come out, look at everything. And they are talking about coming back out and lifting some of those piers, readjusting. While he was there, he did look around the rest of the side of that building from the stretch of the north hall, the west side of the north, north hall. He noticed that there was two inches of difference on that particular wing. We're not seeing any cracks or anything inside sheet rock tearing like we are on the west hall. So I don't think that's a huge threat, I'm not concerned. But on the north side of that hall, where we have the decorative rock, you guys might remember that, kind of basis Whackles House, porch area. We do have separation, I wanted to bring some pictures, but it didn't turn out, so. But we are getting a huge gap in that. He proposed putting three piers there on that north side. He's looking at six thousand dollars. I said I'd bring to you guys, you can toss that around to me. The cooling system stuff's a little more important at this point. If we had to, we could just knock that brick down like we did with the other one along the dining hall. We just got rid of it. Like I said, I'm not seeing any visible cracks inside any resident rooms or anything like that, but we are having some settling issues with that older portion of the building. Another thing that was brought to my attention was through our housekeeping department. They are having difficulty with that new flooring, as poor as it is, getting a good clean on it. So I was supposed to be bringing, and I don't know if it's been brought to you before, I think it has, the floor scrubbers stuff. I have two estimates here. You guys are welcome to have those. Of the floor scrubbers, one was Sage, which I believe was out of Salina. And the other one was B and D Distributing out of Manhattan. We borrowed your guys' floor scrubber from here for a period of time, you guys needed it back. Meanwhile, they're running mops, but that's not digging this grime out of that new flooring.
They're getting back, they need that.
Okay. Might just have to do that and at least get a good cleaning for a little while again.
I don't think they have any reason, they can't borrow it again or use it again, so.
Okay. Also, back, kinda back towards the destruction phase of things. Like I said, our, our wiring stuff looking really good, they're about wound up, our flooring stuff. Our laundry room, we, they installed while I was gone, they installed stainless steel in the laundry. Unfortunately, they did that kind of ahead of the plumbers. And they didn't do a very good job, so they'll be called back to, and they will, they said that we'll admit, we'll change that back out and redo that for you guys, so that's not a huge deal. Let's see, what else do I have for you?
We gotta change a little off, we've gone those.
On the what?
Expansion.
Okay, yeah, so hopefully those guys be rolling in here soon and we can point the inside stuff out.
Are the old ones still on? The ones that were approved by the plans from the architect or the engineer? You guys had taken them off, right? As soon as they started to pose a problem?
Yes.
So I think we should be expecting reimbursement. I mean, that was part of the plans that we paid good money to have. And, you know, it's an insignificant amount compared to the entire project. And I feel like that's something that they could at least cover for us since it was inconducive. I mean, cause I had specifically asked you, and I think Kristen was even here that week, it wasn't just one person.
No, that's true.
It was a real, an issue, not just one particular person who was, yeah. I would like to request that we be reimbursed by the engineering firm for that because that part of his original plans was that particular material. And we hired him for his expertise. And I don't believe that we should be covering the cost of changing out materials that were originally approved. I moved to request reimbursement from Campbell and Johnson for the cost of changing out the floor expansion joints in the amount of one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Maybe add Lincoln Hart Manor to that, excuse me.
I have a motion ready, sir.
Okay. Just, just for an FYI, on the nursing home side, we have thirty residents out of thirty-six rooms. Pretty decent there. Assistant living, we've got five out of nine apartments filled.
So you're at thirty-five?
Yes, ma'am.
I asked this question to Eric Johnson last week, and I'm just gonna kinda verify with you.
Okay.
Are there any particular rooms that during the construction process were planned to be able to house residents that are not able to do that because of some sort of backup in the remodeling process?
Plan to be used.
To be inhabit, to be habitable, inhabitable. I, I'm just wondering, I mean, are you guys having to-
We had to keep rooms empty.
But that was part of the plan.
That was part of the plan, yes. As far as keeping certain rooms full. But basically, for the most part, we just tried to utilize other portions of the building that weren't
For storage.
Under construction.
For storage, though.
Storage, well, yeah, rooms, that's what a lot of those empty rooms were for the construction guys to put their equipment in. Rest of it was just moving around, trying to keep residents happy and away from the noise and the dirt and all that stuff and utilized other portions of the building during construction. So I guess I really don't understand your question.
My question is, did you have any one or more particular resident rooms that were supposed to have a resident move into them and be fully livable during the construction process that, oh, you ha, you couldn't, you weren't able to do that? Or, or was it going according to plan up and through now where these ones were empty for a time until you moved residents from, I mean, I understand everyone, or not everyone, but certain, the certain wings there were moving.
Right.
So I'm asking-
Well, we started in the south hall, we had all people grouped up in north hall and bouncing around, lots, lots of moving. But as far as the plan, no. I understand what you're trying to say. No, I don't think so. The other, last thing, I guess I got, I think it was the first year, we talked about beds. You know, we're talking about the numbers of people here, I want to bring that back up. We talked about waiting for the door bid stuff to get through, we already kinda drew that. And we are, those guys did make a visit last week, double checking doors, had some more questions. I expect them to be coming in getting that project going here anytime soon. Hopefully here before July, I'd like to see them. But, you know, we're still having bed issues with rooms. So if there's any way we can work with our budget of maybe getting a few of those put in, you know, something for you guys to be thinking about. That would be a blessing.
How many beds do we need to replace?
I believe... This, this sheet that I have says fifteen, but I think you're right there, I'm thinking of around the neighborhood of ten.
What is the cost per bed?
Ah, boy, this is not itemized, this is showing fifteen beds at sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five.
It's just about the back due rent amount.
That was the whole of the bed? Or that's what they were renting, I think.
Approximately, I think you're right.
Fifteen gives up to the thirty-six, or what? Is that what?
Yeah.
Then we would all be-
Everything would be new beds and, you know, these are-
Do we, did we, do we have any more? Do we only have that one long bed?
Yes, that one extra long bed for the tall guys.
Yeah, that's the only one we've got.
That's the only one.
Is it being used now? Does it have to be used now?
Right now, I've got it pulled, it was gonna go to a little old lady that, when I caught that, I said, no, we gotta move that to another room. We got some tall guys, but they're wanting to sleep in the recliners and this and that. So it's sitting off in the other room, rather than wait for another resident to move in.
So I was wondering if we needed to buy some-
Longer ones?
Long, another longer one or something. And, it seems like people are always getting larger, taller and heavier and-
It does.
And I just wondered if we needed some, to make some beds available for that, in case we need-
That, that would be a pretty smart idea. And I don't know what the price to, which is all those bigger beds, I'll have to look into that eventually.
I know that became an issue at the hospital a few years ago, I'm on board. We didn't have beds that could support those kind of people.
That's pretty much all I got. We bounced back to Thrasher, do you guys interested that that's, those piers or any of that stuff? The north side, three piers for six thousand. Like I said, to me personally, I'm thinking of this, these heating units.
Well, I think, I think that's for the comfort of the patients is what we gotta keep in mind.
And until I see visible cracks and structural damage, I'd, I mean-
I mean, it's been there about, about sixty years.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been spring of the riot, or?
Yep. Yep.
They're going to come and work on the parts today.
Yes, they are going to readjust that, no charge to you guys for that, for readjusting those peers to get them up to where they need to be. Seems like they were about three quarters of an inch low since they have installed them, so we'll go back in and re-hydrally them up or whatever and give them small lifts.
Was it cracks in the same place that they were before?
Yeah, run along the ceiling. I don't have the slope in the flooring as much as when we previously did that, but yeah, I'm seeing separation of the ceiling.
Same ribs.
And the walls on, yes, mostly the center rooms there, those areas. Other than that, things are going pretty well, guys. So it would be okay to, I guess, speak with the custodian here about the flooring issue?
Sure, yeah.
We got a good time.
I'm sure.
That would be good, before our 4th of July thing and all that, too.
And maybe after the 4th of July.
Yes, pretty well. Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, I'll send me through this morning.
If Jeremiah happens to give me that estimate for those machines, just drop by Don.
Yeah, I'll be going.
Yeah.
Drop by Don.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug here.
Can I ask you a question when I go away? I've been doing them, is there anything to ask, anything to change, anything to go away?
We are just about to meet with someone who's going to act as our financial advisor.
Morning.
Hello.
Morning.
Morning.
Welcome.
Morning.
You had a lot of weather out there last month?
Not real violent weather, but yeah, I was ready.
I assume you want to discuss the financials, is that?
Yes, I was wondering if.
Yes, we need to go into executive session. Don, do you have a paper? I don't have a paper.
Did you?
Did you have one to mark?
No, I don't, not necessarily need to.
And I was wondering, since Kelly's pretty familiar with this.
Yes, yes, I will, I will, I would, I will move to go into executive session. I've got to find my thing. To discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, number four, Don, is that right?
Yes.
For how long do you have to debate with me?
That's a good question, maybe 20 minutes?
We'll do 30 minutes.
I think we have to state the participants.
Yes. I would move that we move, go into executive session for 30 minutes with the purpose of discussing data related to financial affairs, trade secrets of corporations and partnerships and trusts, individual proprietorships with the three commissioners, Doug and Kelly.
And then the statement is going to be.
Do I have another statement, Jim?
Yes, for financial disclosure, consultation over Lincoln Park Manor.
Or?
I'll second. And my discussion is, I would like to have Don attend because she has pertinent information related to the previous relationship that the county has had with the nursing home, and she also has more of an idea of what we actually own there as far as material goods, the inventory list, et cetera. I think she has information.
That'll be fine, I didn't put Don.
That's fine. All those interpreters, say aye.
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 I forgot what you said, Don.
Well, it's a resolution that we need to do with the laws program. Well, I think maybe we should have kind of explained what the situation is that we're in for our viewers. Although, Don, you were on the agenda next. So, basically, we met with Doug in our executive session where he disclosed some of the particular numbers of the financial situation at Lincoln Park Manor, and he was able to recover some past years from about '14 through current, or at least, you know, some months into this current year, and he gave us a little bit of an analysis of the differences in the expenses and what the overall income or debt is looking like for that particular operation. And he has some more research that he'd like to do, he got some information last night that he hadn't integrated into his report, so he kind of put together a spreadsheet for us so that we can see how things are being run, or where the expenses are going, or where the lack of income might come from. But it looks like it's been pretty consistent through the past few years as far as the actual income level, so what we're.
Be a little careful what you say.
What we're interested, we've already discussed some of this in public, but I'm not using any numbers, which I won't. But I do think you owe it to the public to give an explanation of what we're contemplating and what we're talking about are options for the future, as far as, the whole point of a feasibility study is to determine, is it financially feasible or not? And that would be an interest to the public, to know whether it's financially feasible or not. Not what the numbers are, not who gets paid what, that's all part of the private information, but to know whether the business is sustainable. And some of the information that we're gathering is basically going to make the determination as to whether or not it needs to be, continue to be subsidized. And that money comes from you. So that's very much public information for all of you and not to be discussed in executive session. So if we're going to continue to subsidize the nursing home in any way, shape, or form, it's our duty to find out by how much. And some of the discussion that is not private is that we're going to look at some other counties who are combining administration with the hospital. As some of you know, we've already touched on that topic, and it's been explained to us from our hospital administration why that doesn't necessarily jive with their finances, but we're going to dig into that a little bit more because there are other areas that are doing that. And we will report back as far as, the one particular contact we're going to make is Gov County because they have a combined facility. And they are subsidizing still, and we were informed that what they do is they have a, an additional sales tax. So I don't know what their total sales tax is, but you take the six and a half percent of the state mandates, and then you add on to that accordingly. You can add by the county, you can add by the city. So they have a county, the way I understand is they have a countywide 1% sales tax, that that, the entirety of that, a dollar amount every year is designated to subsidize the administration for, well, the cost for the county-owned nursing home and hospital that's combined. Not that we're looking at that exact solution, but just to find out what the details are of how they do their billing and, and how much that actually adds up to. What did they say that, what was the population that we discussed for Gov County? Is it similar to ours by, by how much?
I think it's a thousand and a quarter, and he didn't, he didn't say what the county was.
So it's just about the same size. So we'll report back on what we find as far as, you know, looking into that such, that scenario of how that may or may not be done. But we were talking about the census, and I think right now, they reported today 35. So that gives you the basic idea of what the income would be, you know, if you use that as an average for the annual, monthly, you know, a monthly average for the annual Did you have a question?
As I understand, I've been going on it, so there's lots of things happening since I've been gone. As I understand it, there is some difficulty over the lease with Mr. Grace, non-compliance, did you send him a letter of non-compliance? And that expires another 30 days? Is there any movement on that?
He has.
If he does not comply, what happens to the lease?
We received correspondence that he has rejected our request to pay the rent in arrears. And at this time, we voted this morning to request our county attorney to advise us on how we should respond to that.
So within the next 30 days, we should have some serious negotiation open up about that.
I would think so.
Did he file a counter letter? At the end of 30 days, all things coming up, you could terminate his lease and then what's the situation?
We can terminate his lease, I guess, but I'm not sure where he is. He has notified us that we're in violation, so I would say that.
Well, that was just a response, he wasn't requesting any financial reimbursement or anything like that. But if you have two parties in breach of a lease, I suppose it becomes null and void, he's there at will.
Yeah, so I guess, we tell the county attorney, does whatever she's going to do, we just need to wait and see what's happening, which would be like, that's going to be a crunch for them. If you have serious ownership issues, come back very quick. Actually, they do, economic development folks, thank you very much for your kind of attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would ask to go into executive session and discuss personnel.
I would move, how long do you need, Don?
I would say 10 or 15 minutes.
I'll move, we go into executive session. To discuss non-elected personnel for 15 minutes, County Clerk Harlow, do you need human resources?
We have to have a second statement.
It's to discuss personnel.
That's the one option, right?
Yeah.
We could have a second description.
That is his name, I'm discussing personnel. That's the hard thing about that, is because that one's like, really.
Well, is it a disciplinary thing, is it a monetary thing, is it a, you know what I mean? But there's no description there. There's a, it's kind of a two-part justification, a reason and a justification.
My reason is I need to discuss personnel.
I will second. Any further discussion? Knock.
Well, my discussion is, I thought the whole point of the paper was to have two, we got a letter from Jennifer O'Hare that said we'd have to, you had to mark a box.
I know, and I want to talk about personnel.
But that is one of the options, I'm just saying.
Right.
The justification would be because you have concerns, or we, you know, like there's no description given on the second part of that.
With personnel is kind of hard, so I don't have any disciplinary action, I don't have any pay increase, I want to discuss employees in the clerk's office. How about that?
Hiring, okay.
Employees, no.
Okay.
Employees in the clerk's office?
Sure, you give the office at least, it's a justification for you and not having HR here, I suppose.
All those interpreters, aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll get it.
Did you make changes, Don, to this, were there any changes to this resolution?
What?
Or just?
I did compare the previous, previous years, but I have it here that we could really quickly. The main thing that I understood Kelly to say is they're wanting an every-year resolution. And then, the one thing that we did add was the section down that authorizes the county clerk's office and the economic development office to obtain information. She said sometimes she has to jump through hoops to get the information, and so we thought maybe that might be easier, because at some points in time, we like to see how many people are on the waiting list.
Yeah, true.
Also, to be able to look at those people and see if they're actually residents of our county, because there's been a few that have not, so. Otherwise, as far as I know, it's exactly the same as the previous years. It's just that, and what I thought I would do is, I told Kelly, she said they're wanting this one by July 1st, but what I thought we would do is we will be having a student come off this year, technically, but we'll pay for them until 2018. So like, once the web board meets and a day decides to do that, additional students, then we will redo the resolution at that time each year, if that makes sense.
I'll move, we adopt resolution 201816, which deals with rural opportunities on student loan repayment program. We're presently paying $6,000 a year for four students, five students? I forgot.
Four students.
Four students. Those are contracts we pay for the students for five years, total fif, they get a total of $15,000 off their student loans, state matches. So I would move to adopt resolution 201816.
And that fund is provided by the web board.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those interpreters, aye.
Aye.
How many of these do you need signed, Don?
Two.
Two?
Yes.
I would also suggest that we have Hospital Administrator Steve come in and visit with us on Monday, whichever Monday he can come in.
I don't have a big idea.
I just want to call John Grace about next Monday.
I don't think we're ready to.
We're not ready.
We're not ready to talk to John Grace.
We need, and we, would you please request Jennifer, I know we motioned that earlier, if you request Jennifer to visit with us over that. I don't think that would be an executive session, we just need to know a response, we can.
Unless she feels like it needs to be. I guess we'll adjourn until, what, the first?
30.
30. 29th, oh, yeah. You guys get done cutting wheat?
We still have a little bit to cut.
A little bit.
Yep.
We got down, we're up, rock, we have to do something.
We have some pale down that has to be cut, of course, that's green. Otherwise, the rest is done.
I didn't know if you were starting about 1:30.
Of course, they.
Excuse us here.